You guys are live.
I know. Go outside and went straight up the door. Hey, ready? Okay, good evening. Welcome to the December 8, 2021 meeting of the school board. We will start with the public hearing for the 2021-22 school calendar amendment. Do we have anybody? Oh, do I have a motion to open?
So move.
Second, thank you. Pellet, yes.
Yes.
Williams, yes.
McLean, yes.
Yes.
Do I have any comments?
I've never heard it from anyone.
So then.
I move we close public hearing for the 2021-22 school calendar amendment.
My favorite. Okay, now we will go on to the annual meeting of the retiring board. Rule call, please.
Yes.
McLaren?
Yes.
McLean?
Yes.
Pellet?
Yes.
Williams? Yes. May I have an approval of the meeting agenda?
I move to approve the agenda.
Second.
Clarence?
Yes.
Please? Yes.
Pellet?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, our first action item is the 2021-22 school calendar amendment.
Amendment, the amendment that we're requesting is that on January 17th, which also be is Martin Luther King Day, that that is a professional development, development wellness day. So no kids will be in school that day. We will not make up those six and a half hours instruction that day at the end of the year. We would invite all of our staff to be a part of that.
I have a motion to approve.
Alright, so move.
Second, thank you.
Yes.
Pellet? Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
McLaren?
Yes.
McLean?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to the November board meeting minutes.
I move we approve the November board meeting minutes.
Second, thank you. McLean?
Yes.
Pellet?
Yes.
McLaren?
Yes. Yeah.
Yes. Now on to the 2020-21 annual report.
We've talked a little bit about some of these things this fall. So I'm not going to go through all of them. There are a couple that we want to point out a little bit. My opening annual report introduction, we talked about the challenges that we had with COVID throughout the year. Some of the things that through that process, we found out were, were, were good and, and continue to do those things. Even though we're, well, we're still not out of COVID, but it's more, a little more normal than had been in the previous year. I want to point out a couple of things. We'll work on getting the state ACT results. We haven't been, been having any luck doing that over the last two years. But I want to see, if you go to that page where it talks about seniors pursuing post-secondary education. You take a look at those numbers, 2019 was around 70%. 2020 was maybe 71, a little more, but last year, 80.77% of the graduates pursued in post-secondary education. So as I look at those numbers, those are significantly higher than they had been in the previous years. And then also, if we look at our graduation rate, 97.85 versus 91.8, which is the state average. So those are a couple of numbers that jump off the chart for me. The next documents you have, we reviewed those. Those are the results from our ISAPs last spring. What was requested was a little bit of cohort data. So you have a hard copy of those in the extra documents that were given to you. So if I look at the math and the language arts. Take, so if you look at the tall bars, those are your proficient folks. So if the, the gold line's a little bit higher than the other ones, that means we have more proficient kids two years later. And then also, if you look at the blue and the green, those are the ones that were high performers. So if you look at, for example, class of 2025, in 2023, or excuse me, two years ago in 2019, there was one student that was a high performer versus about 12 two years later. So that's how you would interpret that information. And then on the backside too, then you have math. You probably can see that if you look at class 2028, 2027, and 2024 and 2022, we see that the proficiency in math went down as far as the numbers are concerned with those. Whereas the other ones increased. So that is one piece of data that we can look at. Not only the results from last spring, but also cohort data plus some of the other pieces of data that goes into trying to come up with conclusions as to what's working, what's not working, and what actions need to be taken in the future. We have our staff there. Our district discrimination policy, the calendar. And then Sarah's got some numbers for you. Any questions on that, the data on the front side?
So your conclusion is from these progress that that what we are doing better some years than another year and other classes are doing as well or?
That's what the data would say. But we also have to look at it as one piece of data too. So how, how is that information provided with the other information we gather about their performance in either English language arts or math? And does it say the same, does it tell the same story? And if not, why not? So there's some questions that buildings, as they gather more data, the building leadership team take a look at those types of things and say, okay, what does this mean for us as far as these two areas?
So principals and district leadership, look at these better form conclusions and ideas and for improvement. Go ahead.
I mean, we talked about it at PSYIC meetings and you know, the data in other places as well. I think we shared it in DLT. We'll look at individual students. So when we look at data for each individual students and create those interventions or extensions, that's the data. I mean, we want to, we want to get it narrowed down to each kid.
Let you make sure your intervention matches with their respective areas.
I think at the elementary level, they also look at, you know, the fast data and then four or five, they have NWA data. So they have to gather that and put that all. It finally got into panorama, right? We have all that in one spot now.
Yes.
So. Sarah, have you anything on your numbers?
No, they should already know all those numbers. Looked at all that a couple of times now. Does anybody have any other questions? Move to approve the annual report. Second, thank you. Pellet?
Yes.
Yes.
McLean?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
McLaren?
Yep.
Great, the 2020-21 depository statement. So this is just the annual report that is required by Iowa code that the board has to review. And it just shows the bank balances as of June 30th compared to the balances that we showed in the accounting system. Just so that you guys can confirm that those numbers all matched.
I move we approve the 2021 depository statement. Second.
Thank you. Hunt?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
McLean?
Yes.
Pellet?
Yes.
McLaren?
Yes.
The abstract of votes for on 11 to 21 school election.
Sarah, do you have those traditional numbers?
For the election? Yeah. Kristi Pellet received 771, Josh McLaren 802, Amanda Burke 588, and there was eight scattered. So Kristi and Josh were reelected. It's another four-year term.
Do you need a motion to?
Yeah.
To?
To accept them.
I move to accept the abstract of votes.
Sorry.
McLaren?
Yes.
Hunt?
Yeah.
Pellet?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
McLean?
Yes.
Congratulations. Thank you for running. Alrighty, employee dismissal.
Yeah, I'm recommending that we terminate Mark Reidman, who's a custodian based on causes stated in policy for 13.4.
So I move that we approve this employee dismissal.
Williams?
Yes.
McLean?
Yes.
McLaren?
Yes.
Pellet?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second, everyone say hi.
Alright.
Okay. Okay, now we're going on to our organizational meeting of the new board. Yes, I will call to order the organizational meeting of the board at 6:11 PM. First action is to administer the oath of office to Josh and Kristi. Guys, let's just come stand up. And look official.
Sorry.
Okay, Kristi and Josh, yeah. You solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Iowa, and that you will faithfully and impartially, to the best of your ability, discharge the duties of the office of school board member in Atlantic Community School District as now or hereafter required by law.
I will.
Okay, I will now take the roll call. Meeting, Hunt?
Yeah. Yes.
McLean?
Yes.
Pellet?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Do I have a motion to approve the agenda? So move. Hunt?
Yeah.
Pellet?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
McLaren?
Yes.
McLean?
Yes.
The next item is election of board president. Do I have a nomination for the board president?
I would like to nominate Jenny Williams as board president.
A second. Any other nominations? I believe nomination ceased and cast. Second. Hunt?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
McLaren?
Yes.
Pellet?
Yes.
Yes. Or Jenny? Oh, right away. Oh, let me do those. Do you want to stand up? Back here?
Sure.
I might trip again. Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Iowa? And you will faithfully and impartially, to the best of your ability, discharge the duties of the office of president in Atlantic Community School District as now or hereafter required by law. Okay, do I have a nomination for vice president?
I'd like to nominate Laura McLean as the vice president.
A second. Nomination. Nomination ceased.
Second. Get that second on that too.
Yes.
Did the vote?
I didn't cast unanimous ballot because you took the voice vote last time.
I'm just trying to do this log.
Part of my motion.
Didn't we do it last time?
No, you asked for it.
You asked for your roll call vote, so I didn't. I thought, oh, maybe I'm not allowed to do that. I would amend my motion to include a unanimous ballot.
Yeah.
Okay, let's do a roll call.
No, I did a roll call though on president.
You did on president.
Yeah, you are.
She, she's moved to have a unanimous voice.
Oh, I didn't hear that. But I thought maybe that was not allowed. Yeah, so that's what it was. You're not allowed to do that. So then I didn't do it the second. Okay, let's do a roll call though on Laura McLean as the vice president. McLean?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Hunt?
Yes.
McLaren?
Yes.
Pellet?
Yes.
Woo. Okay. Yeah.
Yeah.
Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Iowa? And that you will faithfully and impartially, to do the best of your ability, discharge the duties of the office of vice president in Atlantic Community School District as now or hereafter required by law? Thank you. Thank you. Okay, moving on of the appointment of board treasurer. I move just like Sarah Shear as board treasurer and board secretary. Hunt?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
McLean?
Yes.
Pellet?
Yes.
McLaren?
Yes.
We appoint the Cass County.
You're going to do the.
Sorry.
Yeah.
Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Iowa? And that you will faithfully and impartially, to the best of your ability, discharge the duties of the office of secretary and treasurer in the Atlantic Community School District as now or hereafter required by law? Thank you, sir. Okay, now to appoint the Cass County Conference Board representative.
Okay, now there's some drama because I can't do it anymore. They keep on meeting on Thursday nights, which is when I work. And so I keep missing, either I'm missing meetings or I'm missing work. And that, that hasn't been great. So.
How often do we? Just like quarterly?
Yes, it used to be, but it's, yeah.
I got drama.
Yeah, yeah. And it used to be actually a lot less than quarterly, even though they are supposed to meet quarterly. But, so I don't know. I can't really predict going forward. They have a meeting on Thursday.
Yep. It's number 16, Thursday next meeting.
Alright. You want me to do it? I bid to one of those meetings.
You have experience.
Sure, I can make it through.
Yeah, we'll swap. I'll be vice president and you do conference.
I hope we appoint Nick Hunt.
Second.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it, yes. Okay, now moving on to the, to appoint the Title IX coordinator.
Yeah, I'd like to recommend or appoint Mr. Josh Rasmussen. He's been training Title IX laws and he's represented our Title IX coordinators for New Year's.
Move, we appoint Josh Rasmussen as Title IX coordinator.
Second.
Williams?
Yes.
McLaren?
Yes.
Pellet?
Yes.
McLean?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, Josh. Alright, I appoint the equity coordinator.
That's all Mr. Rasmussen.
I appoint Josh Rasmussen as the equity coordinator.
Second.
Pellet?
Yes.
Hunt?
Yes.
McLean?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
McLaren?
Yep.
Thank you again, Josh. Appoint the LMC board representatives. Currently, I have been going for the certified and Nick has been going for the non-certified.
I will continue. So approves, so the approval meets the rest of the board.
So that's been going well? It feels like you're contributing. It's worthwhile for you to be there.
Yes.
And you're good to continue with that.
Yeah. I think, yeah, I think it's, it's worthwhile. I don't think. Sometimes I wonder if a board member needs to be there or not, but I don't think I conflict. I think it's okay for a board member to be there. I learned, I learned some things. It's good.
Um, so I would be willing to do it again, but also willing to have a fresh face if anybody is willing to do it. I struggle with whether we need board representation there. So I think I would like to have a discussion, you know, at a later date.
So it's not required, I seem to recall, right?
We, we as a board decided that we would have board representation. So as of now, we, yes, I believe we do need to have board representation.
And does it need to be the same person every time? Or are we able to appoint more than one person in or how does that?
I think in the past, if Jenny or I can't make a meeting, then we try and select another board member to fill in.
They are on the first Wednesday of the month for the certified. We usually meet at three or 3:15 and it ends promptly at four. So if that fits. Into any of those. So do you want, if you, I'm a little confused to clarify, if you're recommending that possibly we don't continue doing that? Do you want to continue to fulfill that role until that decision's made or do you want?
I would be willing to do that, yes. Should we move on both? So I would move that Jenny continue to be the LMC representative for certified staff and Nick Hunt be the representative for the non-certified.
Second.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Williams?
Yes.
McLaren?
Yes.
McLean?
Yes.
Pellet?
Yes.
Okay, adopt the rules and procedures for conducting board meetings. Move that we adopt Robert's Rules of Order for conducting a board meeting. Second. McLaren?
Yes. Yes.
Pellet?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
McLean?
Yes.
Okay, now we're going to set the regular date, time, and place of the board meetings. So this time, we have the option to choose a different night and a different time. Yes. That's what we choose to do. Does this still work for everybody?
Can we move it up a half hour?
5:30.
Just, I mean, out of consideration for administrators and other people, that it's kind of a dead time, but we're just kind of, I don't know. I feel like I'm just sitting around waiting to go to the meeting, whereas we can just go a little sooner.
I seem to recall Nick has some conflict, so I don't know if that's so true.
Sarah Witzler up to.
I think 5:30 would be alright.
I would agree. I would appreciate that. Sometimes we go a little late. Okay.
And then we're still thinking the fourth, second, and the fourth Wednesday?
Yeah. Finally. Although if we set the, well, I guess let's go to, refine at the highest, I mean, how do we want to set the place of?
Yeah, high school media center.
Yeah, so we'll go, I mean, we set the regular date as the second and fourth Wednesday at 5:30 PM at the Atlantic High School Media Center.
Second. Williams?
Yes.
McLean?
Yes.
McLaren?
Yes.
Pellet?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, moving on to the resolution of naming the official publication.
Telegraph.
That's all requirement.
I know that we designate the Atlanta News Telegraph as the publication of record.
Thank you. McLean?
Yes.
McLaren?
Yes.
Pellet?
Yes.
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
The resolutions will likely go cancel. Not in there.
Dallas, I move we approve Lynch Dallas as our legal counsel.
Second. Mary?
Yes.
Pellet?
Yes.
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
McLean?
Yes.
Okay, moving on. Do we have any visitors or public comments tonight? To my knowledge, we do not. Okay. Alright. Um, so we have a special presentation. We welcome Mallory Robinson, and she is going to tell us about Thought Exchange.
Thanks, Mallory. Yeah. Sorry that I was a few minutes late. I was at the high school wondering why you were all late to the meeting. After a while, I was like, you know, this is probably not where we're meeting since I'm the only one here. Um, as you all know, we, let's see, it's just a little.
Might go here, I think, huge name. One, is it one or two?
I'm like, how is it moving?
There's. Here you go.
No.
Well.
It's hooked up back.
It is on. Just says HDMI out, so it should be one of those.
Perfect. Log in just into the built-in PC.
So. But I can just hold my computer. It's okay. Mallory, I'm trying to hold the other. Yeah. I'm going to come to you. No. Thank you. Well, I wonder. It's definitely, it should be VGA.
VGA?
Although wait a second. This is HD. Right, but the fourth cell is plugged into an HDMI cord by using the VGA attachment. Yes. I'm wondering if I should move this HDMI back here though to one of these. Otherwise, we have to log into the.
There we go. Thank you. Now, thank you.
Thank you. Oh, no, there we go. Okay. So, um, as most of you are aware, we have started using Thought Exchange. And so at the very beginning, we chose 15 people that, that I selected that I knew. Please, we're going to send you a thought exchange. Here's what it is. Here's how it works. Can you please complete it? Talk to me about, you know, give me feedback on the process. Was it easy to use? All of those things. So we picked a very simple question, just sent it out to those people, were able to, you know, get their feedback. So the first question we used was this bottom one here. What was something positive that we've done this school year so far? So we chose parents, staff, and and students. and students. So went to the high school, sat with the five students that Mr. Barber found for me to work with. Um, when you are executing Thought Exchange, there are really two ways to go about gathering data. You can use a live setting like this, where you launch the Thought Exchange, and you're giving people a captive amount of time to complete that Thought Exchange in your presence. The other way is to send it out via email or text and put a time limit on it or not, and then just encourage people to complete it at their, you know, availability. Obviously, when we have people in a captive setting, it's going to be easier, and you're going to get higher participation because they're right there and you're encouraging them to do it. So that is something that we've already seen consistently, just in the two weeks that we've been using Thought Exchange. You know, all five students completed it, and they all rated each thought that was completed, because I gave them only fifteen minutes to do so. The first Thought Exchange that we rolled out kind of globally to parents was asking for feedback on conferences. So when we met with administrators, the one thing that they really wanted to start with is, is digging into, you know, conferences. What people think about them? Do they like the, the style of in-person and Zoom? Are they attending conferences? If not, why? How can we increase, you know, conference attendance and things like that? As I talked with one of our AEA representatives who's very knowledgeable of Thought Exchange, a very wise piece of advice he gave was, don't ask a Thought Exchange that you're not willing to act upon. So if you ask a question and you get honest, good feedback, if you're not willing to act upon it, the tool immediately becomes null and void. No, nobody's going to trust it. They're not going to trust that you're using it as you say you will. So we all agreed that acting upon getting higher attendance at conferences is something we, you know, we thought would be great. So the very first one, like I said, we did for parents is this Atlantic Community School District Conference Feedback. The first day, I sent an email with the link and instructions, and there were about just under eleven hundred contacts that that went to through JMC. The next day, about ten AM, I sent a text reminder that you have an email, you know, please complete the, the Thought Exchange at your earliest convenience. So as of today, we have a hundred and eleven people who have participated in the Thought Exchange, which is really only about ten percent of the people that we sent it to. Something I'm eager to kind of figure out as I dive into this and understand Thought Exchange is, one, reiterating without being annoying, that it is very, very important that people use this tool because decisions we made right now, based on ten percent of, of the population of people that we hold essentially. And two, what is going to be the best way to utilize this and get the highest participation, you know, return? So we're not able to send clickable links through JMC text. I already inquired at JMC about that. And so that is a little kind of a bummer, because I do think that if it was, you know, yeah, clicked right from their text, I, I do think that that would be a higher participation. I think we all know the more clicks people have to go to get to something, the less they're gonna, you know, it's just more reason to not do it. So. Um, I will say, for the, the people that provided feedback, they did so quickly. This one hundred and eleven participants, I would say, came really within the first thirty-six hours of the Thought Exchange, which I think is something I, I feel confident that we could say those people that are going to participate quickly will do that each time. I feel like it's something, you know, it's a topic that's important to them. So how Thought Exchange works is when you are setting up, have you guys walked through? Am I, okay, I will not reiterate. I won't tell you things you already know. Um, so as Thought Exchange is rolling, data is coming in all the time. As you know, you don't have to wait, you know, any long periods of time. This screen here starts to break down the data that has come in on this particular Thought Exchange. So as you can see, we have a hundred and eleven participants, a hundred and twenty-three shot thoughts have been shared. There have been two thousand one hundred and eight ratings, and seventeen is the rating ratio, is that's about how many thoughts each participant rated. If you scroll down, you see sixty-two participants shared thoughts, ninety-two rated them, so on and so forth. This just continues to break down more data based on the survey questions that we asked. So one participant did not listen to the video or read any of the instructions, and were very, was very frustrated that we were asking the same question over and over. So as you know, it's going to keep asking until you say you're done sharing thoughts. So it's not really a multiple choice question. It's, it's one question, and then you share as many thoughts as you want. So um, the survey questions are kind of where we dive into more of that data, so, or more specific, you know, groupings of, of data. So this, one of the survey questions we asked is what grades of students are represented in your household? As you can see, we've had at least five or more participants in every grade level that was represented, as is represented. Um, then we just started asking, I posed some questions to try to understand, because we are able to take these survey questions and link them back to their thoughts, even though anonymous, we're able to see. If somebody says they never attend conferences and their thought is conferences are dumb, well, then, I mean, that's not really data to, to make decisions off of, because they're not attending to see the benefits. So that's kind of where those survey questions come into play and the importance of those. Um, as you can see, sixty percent always attend. And then those, that data goes on from there. Um, if you do not attend conferences, please select from the following potential reasons as to why you do not attend. This was kind of brought up in our discussion as admin, you know, where, like I, I said personally for myself, I think conferences are very important, but I have been in communication with my daughter's teachers earlier that fall, and I was very happy with where she was, and I, I felt like I, I didn't, I didn't need to have another touch base. And so I want to just include some of those both maybe positive and negative reasons as to why people are not attending conferences. So that's kind of that section there. Something that was important to several of our administrators all really is, how often are you checking your students' progress in JMC? I think as we do each Thought Exchange, we'll learn something each time. Something I wish I would have included as an option, an answer option in this one was not applicable, because like for Stacy's parents, you know, they're not needing to check JMC at all. So these, you know, eighteen percent saying never could be all elementary, you know, and so I don't know what that never means. If that means it's just not applicable to them, or they hate JMC, you know, so just things that I think we'll learn each time we do one. And then this, I think, is so interesting. My preferred method of attending conferences, you know, fifty-eight percent are staying in person. And so then taking this data and dissecting it and find, and making decisions, one, on what do conferences look like, and two, do we need additional Thought Exchange questions and data gathered based on what we have found here? So, you know, fifty-eight percent say in-person is great. Are ninety-five percent of those people who are saying that eighth grade and up under? You know, so I think the really neat thing about this tool is just that, is you have this data, and now you can even break it down even further and say, I want to find out even more about the answers that are given here. Beyond that, we have had a couple, like I said, one to the board to test, so that you guys could kind of walk through and see the data on that. So let's open your Thought Exchange. Three participants with Smith's thoughts. We'll talk about that later. We will talk about that later. And I will say, one school member did come in yesterday and tell me that he would not be completing it, so Elise was honest with me.
Mallory, you want to share just a little bit on how the AI worked, please?
Yeah, the background? Yeah, so, um, one thing that is also great about that, well, there's many things, but one thing that's especially great is it will filter out any negative thoughts, any, you know, vulgarity, any names, any, you know, anything that is going to be identifying. So we're able to decide, and we can turn on and off of each Thought Exchange if we want those type of comments locked until approval by who administered that Thought Exchange. So for, on our end, to see that, you go into manage, and oh, I'm sorry, going to moderate, wrong slide. So this person identified, identified a person's name, Steel McLaren. And so that was kicked out because the, the point here is that it is truly anonymous. There is no identifying factors. And so another thing it will do is the person on the conferences one who kept reiterating, they kept saying, I said I want Zoom. I said I want Zoom. Why are you asking me? I said I want Zoom. It finally stopped them. And so you can't keep, you can't like stuff about, you can't like keep putting the same thought in sixty-five times that, you know, to get your point of thought. So then I get an email that says, you know, this comment has been flagged, you know, that kind of thing. And then I have the option to say, oh, you know what? This is actually okay. It, it, you know, it said he or she, and there's no way, based on this Thought Exchange, that you would know who he or she is. But if it's like, you know, how do you think Jenny Williams is doing as a school war press, or, you know, I mean, you know, she would be clear as to who she was. So I think that's great that you can kind of, you know, back into that. In this dashboard is really, like I said, where you get all of your data from the Thought Exchange. I'll just run through these really quick. The Word Cloud is going to pick out most commonly used words. The thoughts are going to list all of your thoughts. You know, these are your guys' thoughts about Christmas decorating. This will start. This will start, this Thought Exchange isn't going to have a lot of these because it's such a small. Yeah, yeah, but this will start breaking down all these here, you know, different reports. If there's a theme throughout the Thought Exchange, I'm in different data that really we're able to, like I said, dissect all the information. The slides, it immediately puts together a slide presentation. So if anybody is in, you know, you're at a staff meeting and you're calling your staff, you immediately can see what data is there, and you can share that, like, live, I mean, in real time. And you're also able to hide slides that you may not want. If it, if it doesn't, you know, apply, like for us, we're not going to have any bar graph data on how you feel about Christmas decorating, because there's only three of you that did that. So things like that, you can kind of, you can kind of pick and choose what you're showing, so.
So what you're saying is if Josh had participated, we would have so much.
It was just that one more, and then we'd have some actual data.
Which is taking Christmas.
So like on the conferences one, we will, I will just, I don't want to take too much of your time, but you know, this, we're going to have a lot more, you know, immediately populated data, just because the number of participants and the thoughts is so, are so much greater. You know, things of that nature.
So obviously, you can see that there's a lot of tools in there, and it's, so we're still learning. I think we've learned a lot just through these four. And how it works, and, and the do's and the do-nots as far as setting things up, and and I know Mallory's working with principals too, because they have some ideas that they want to get out. We'll be working on some surveys. So I think we, we talked about then, since this conference thing shut down today, that Mallory will send out something on social media or multiple avenues, say, hey, we had twenty percent participation rate. So people know that we're looking at it and, and we're doing, doing types of things like that. So, you know, just one thought that came up that we looked at was that, you know, my kids really struggle, and I want to know about that prior to conferences. Well, I think that's great information for, for the principals and the teachers to say, hey, are we, are we connecting with people early enough, so they don't dig too deep of a hole as far as grades are concerned, or behavior, or whatever it might be? So I think there's, there's things that are going to come from just this one here that we're going to be able to grab a hold of and do something about.
And, you know, this first one, we really kind of hammered the communication, this Thought Exchange is out. Have you, you know, please participate, things like that. You know, and Mr. Barber mentioned, I will now, the other kind of, it'll just be a learning process for our community to understand, have the importance of this and how it works. But is to now that all these thoughts are in here, have you had a chance to go back in and read the thoughts that have come in after the ones that you completed? So typically, we'll just send it out, you know, as, as we learn, as our parents and staff and community understands how this works, we'll just send it out the one time, and then the reminder to go back in and read the thoughts, and, and those that participate, participate, and I think it'll be a very valuable tool to show if you, if you really have something to say and are wanting to be heard, I mean, you, you have to follow the processes that are given to you, you know, the tools that are given to you. Because those are how the decisions, you know, some decisions will be made. So. You guys have any, but yeah.
So I think it's critical what you said early on, that don't ask a question unless you're ready to follow through.
Correct. Yes.
I think that's critical.
Yeah.
And then the other thing, I have a question on it, is after you get done with the survey, and you compile your results, you then forward it back to those participants and said, thank you for participating. Here's the results, and here's how we're going to use that data or information.
Yeah, I think that, that process will depend a little bit on the Thought Exchange, each Thought Exchange, but in my opinion, I believe that the results should be shared with the entire, you know, if it's to parents, we share with parents. I'm not just the ones that participated, because I think the only, yeah, I think the only way we get people to understand and participate is by seeing, you know, the, yes, absolutely. So yes. To answer your question, definitely take the data, say, here is the data, communicate that we have received it. We are now in this phase of the process, which is processing, you know, communicating amongst ourselves, people that are responsible for making the decisions about that specific Thought Exchange. You can expect communication, you know, about any changes in the next, you know, whatever, whatever that looks like for that. So, yeah.
I think part of the beauty, though, to your question, Nick, is the engagement of the tool itself. So I don't have to share with many people that I highly encourage parent-teacher conferences. And four point three ratings, and how many, how many ratings was there?
People.
So the results come back right away, and people see it.
So that's part of the, the engagement of, of being part of that thought.
But, but ours, do some of them fill it out and then just space it out and then come back and see the results?
Yes. So I think it's important to follow through. Yeah, yeah, follow through with that, for sure.
No, I just, I appreciated your thing about the reminder to go back and check, because I like to keep my email box really clean. And so after I did this, I wanted to throw it away.
Yeah.
But I was like, I left it there, so I would remember to go back in and check, and
Yeah.
And I, I think probably keeping a shorter timeframe is going to be better, although maybe you would say differently, like if you're someone who doesn't check your emails often, it might be that we'll need to think about that and find where that sweet spot is, where people don't forget about it entirely, but where they all have time to see it.
Right. Yeah, those are all those things that I have sticky notes of, you know, like
Yeah.
what, yeah, this was seven days, this is five days. Yeah, 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 absolutely.
And so is, the data is mostly coming through you, or?
Yeah.
But, but there's several people who do have access to these?
So all, all principals, myself.
Great.
Have all access to that.
I'm just thinking, I mean, we do, as a board, we want to hear back about this, because this is, this year is a trial run, so we're interested to know how it's going.
Yeah, I'm excited. I really, I don't know, honestly, in my professional career, that I've ever seen a tool this user-friendly and great. I don't know. I mean, it, the fact that it's anonymous and you can
Have options.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's pretty great. So I'm hopeful that our, you know, stakeholders will take a little bit.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Any other questions?
So in our daily conversations with our people, or who we run into that we need to promote, I would assume this Thought Exchange, and then if you get an email,
Yeah.
this is what we're trying to do.
I think the key.
For you to respond.
Yeah. I think the key, if I could make one point to anybody that I'm talking to Thought Exchange about, is that it, it's kind of that saying, like, don't complain if you don't vote, you know? I mean, it really is that same, in my mind, philosophy and mindset of. Philosophy and mindset of this is how we are polling our people, you know, and getting feedback and making. Sometimes, you know, really difficult decisions, maybe sometimes not, but either way. You know, we're asking because we do believe your opinion matters and so it's it's important that not just ten percent. Of our parents make the decision on conferences, you know, yeah. That's kind of my initial feedback anywhere. All right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Mrs. Mallory is still here, oh, first, I want to give her a huge shout out, she taped my tricketra and took photos and made the cutest video, so if you guys didn't check out.
It was awesome.
Please do that.
It was super awesome. It was very fun.
And just as a side note, the holiday spirit is live in Wollat, Washington, so if anyone needs to come and cheer.
I did see all pictures of your door.
The door content is so.
Very creative.
So great.
Yeah, I I'm not one of that, but there are some really creative people.
I go next, I'm I'm grateful for our transportation department, we did an evacuation drill. Last week and all the bus drivers were out there and all our kids jumped on the buses and I I walked into one of the buses. And the other ones were doing the same drill, but those guys know every kid that goes on that bus and they they know something about each one of them. So that was pretty neat to see, so I just wanted to kind of give those guys a shout out. But no, it's been really nice, we had a choir concert last night and for some of the kids, they haven't had a concert in a couple of years. So parents were very excited, but did a really nice job, so that that was good.
So I guess I have two shout outs. One, definitely grateful for the ladies that I get to work with in the office, the secretaries and. I always call them their my right hand and my left hand, they're just amazing. The way they organize everything, the way they keep things going. They keep me going, it's the right places, it's just really, really nice to know that. There's this team that I know I can rely on in any type of situation and. They're going to do good work, so I just really appreciate that. And the other thing I don't know that I've ever really kind of described to you or not, this is something we started maybe five years ago. And that's with our special ed department. And once a semester, especially when we get ready to start a new semester, we look at all of the students and their goal areas and then we strategically schedule. Their SBI time, so their specially designed instruction, so that way, number one, there's a good group working on the same goal in the same timeframe. And then we also have ways to make sure that we got support in all the right classes for them. And this is, I call it the NFL draft, because honestly, I feel like when we set up the conference room, that's what it looks like with. Names and goal areas and schedules and. It just, it takes a lot of work from the special ed department, the counselors, and I just really appreciate. How they, number one, know their kids and number two, know who's going to work well together, who needs more support. It's just, that's, that's a gift of an educator.
Okay, let's move on to superintendent report.
Yeah, so we're at Iowa School Board Association, there's booth on rural school advocates of Iowa. We are, we are not a member of that. And the rationale that I've always had in regards to that is we're a member of Iowa School Board Association. And ISFIS, which is Margaret Buxton, who's also the advocate for the rural. Rural school advocates of Iowa. I think they've become more organized than the original group and I I would be comfortable. Becoming a member of that at seven hundred fifty bucks a year. Which is based on their website and talking to Dave Dotten, who's come on board over last year is. He feels that they're the the strongest voice for rural America, so. We can sign up for that. Last year, you know, the ESRS came out, there was a lot of guidance that came out in regards to that. And late last spring also, there was some schools that had done some incentives, so now that. The guidance has been done three or four times, and Mr. Sheeter and I are in the process of seeing. If if that's something that is possible, first of all, through our attorney, the auditor and the Iowa Department of Education. And second of all, is that something that Atlantic wants to work at, so once we get more information, we'll. Decide if we want to bring that as part for discussion. I know. Atlantic had went through some difficult times in regards to budget concerns. And Forecast Five was a tool that was was used pretty extensively. At Atlantic, even the first couple of years I was here, Gary Sinclair was the leader, the owner or whatever, he was a creator of this document, he's. He's long passed. Or gotten out of there, so when Forecast Five, when we started with that, we had a personal relationship with another individual. Now we get an email, send us the document, they send us something back. And then we look at Mrs. Sheeter's unspent authority and projections down the road, they match pretty closely. Plus, ISFIS is also has a tool similar to Forecast Five. And at a cost of ninety eight hundred dollars a year, I'm not so sure we get the worth out of that, I know. Christie, you were a big fan of Forecast Five and all that.
My question was going to be, is Gary Sinclair still around?
No.
And part of it too was the fact that we were able to compare our data with like, who's the data of other districts, is that true of the ISFIS?
I still think, I still think that that capability exists, we we don't really use that too much. And, you know, to that point, Forecast Five has become corporate more than, I think it's been sold two or three different times.
Yeah, no, I don't have a problem with that, I do think there's value if there are other tools that we can kind of see. You know, where our levels are, whether it's staffing levels, various budget points, we can compare that with. Whether it's a Hawkeye ten or. You know, three A districts or whatever, that that's beneficial to me.
You can get a lot of that from IASB, they have a lot of pools now.
I just have to be able to sort for it and ask for it, you know, that, I mean, to me, that was helpful sometimes to see like, oh, okay, we are, you know. High here or low, whatever the case is.
Today, I met with Steve Stocker, he came from Wisconsin, he's in charge of our wood floors. And we we looked at the gym and part of the damage with fire was to to resand the gymnasium here. The good news is that we have, the thickness of the gym floor boards are plenty, there's plenty of. Wood there and when they sand, they don't take much off anyway. So currently it has a water base and I I don't know when the transition took place. But Russell talked a little bit about the reason they did is because if you put water base down, you only have to be out of the gym for three days. Well, a lot of people that made that decision based upon those things are going back to oil, because it's a better shine and it's a safer floor. Because your oil, your oil finish is not as slick as your water base finish. So I am recommending that when we do that to go back to oil, what is that, what's the downfall to that? It's a short term downfall, it's three weeks. Where you have to be off the floor, we're thinking the middle school, once the basketball season's off, we shut it down, they come. And do the middle school, so by the time we get into the thick of of spring sports, that'll be available to them. And then that gym will be available in the summer when we have to shut down the high school gym for a while. If we do the high school gym, I guess I got ahead of myself a little bit, but then I went to the high school and. Looked at the gym floor up there. He says it's in decent, in decent shape, but it's been twelve years, Josh said last time it's been twelve years ago. And the lifespan's about anywhere between eight and fourteen. So it may be a year ahead of time, but but I'm thinking if we're going to do the middle school gym, it might be a good time to do the high school gym, plus we're going to take. And and get new motors and get new wheels on the bleachers that are causing some of the the dirt too, so. We can talk about that later, but that's what I took away from that and, you know, then we, he would put a design together for us. We would encourage our PE folks to think through what kind of lines they want in there, so we're not putting tape down on the floor. And then according to Stocker, that secondary volleyball line should be two inches instead of one inches. Regulation, so we can get up to code if that is, we have a twelve, we have a twelve inch black. Out of bounds line, we could probably move that to a six inch or a four inch type of thing, so those are some things. That we could talk about at the high school. And also you have inside the three point line, you have a tone inside there at the high school, if you wanted to do that, the middle school, you could do that. Some of those types of things, so. That was good. And then EMC is working through the process. If we approve the changes tonight, things are going to move a little quicker at the middle school reconstruction. There's a lot of people ready to go to work, Drew is looking at. Putting a plan together where he's got different contractors on different floors. So I'm I'm excited about where we're at with that. Electrical subcontractor has been here the last couple of days, you drove in, it was dark today. You'll notice there's fewer lights on, so he's got that problem worked out a little bit. But I think we're in a pretty good spot there. Then. EMC is going to probably cut us a check here next week and first onsite, has been patient, they wanted to get paid last month, so I haven't received any money yet, so. But and and they know that we're the second Wednesday. But if they approve that money the next day or two and we get it in possession, they would prefer us feeding again and. Maybe approving their invoice. And I want to, I want to shoot out, because you, Tom Wallen and Bob's here to talk a little bit about substantial completion. That's exciting for me, I'm grateful for finally getting there. I'm grateful for the progress we've made on the facilities and. Dave Stern's not here tonight too, but I know when they signed the contract for the work that they were to do on the project and now it's nine months further. I mean, he's given us a lot and and the reason he's done that, because he cares about the community and he wanted to make sure that. Those projects are getting done right, so hats off to all those people that put the effort into making that a reality.
Does anybody have any questions? Let's move on to board report. Anybody have anything to share?
As we get started out with another sport season, a lot of people taking tickets and admissions, you know, and volunteers and. For that, appreciate that, we've had a presentation by Booster Club. I did have a member of the Booster Club ask if the board wanted to volunteer specifically for the Hawkeye ten wrestling tournament on January twenty ninth, which is a Saturday all day. And they expect a lot of people there. So if any of you are available to do that, I said I would help, but I want to be in the gym, so I'm watching the tournament too, so. But I also did a place speak for us, sorry, that we'd be allowed to do a basketball game too. That's my grant too.
My shout out, I'm not, this will be the only time I'll do this, but I did just want to say that I appreciate the board and Mr. Barber. For getting these handy dandy boardsmanship. Achievement awards, it does represent a significant, a deliberate intentional effort. For us to be good board members and so it's, I think that for me, and I think for my other board members and I've talked to people. I mean, it grows out of really loving this community and really appreciating and respecting. The work that our staff do and how much the community supports this district and so we really want to be good stewards of the position that we have and we also want to. We want to keep going upward, I mean, we want to make this a really great district and a really fantastic place for kids to be educated, even more so than they are now and. I, you know, I just appreciate that every single person on this board put in the extra work last year to get the certificate, that's pretty unusual. In the state, there were only seven districts that got this award, but you can get it if you just have a majority of board members that. Put in the extra time and we had every single person who did.
I didn't realize you were that great, but.
Yeah, pat yourself on the back.
My shout out, I. Attended the first time an archery meet Saturday and. Learned a lot about how they keep score and. Appreciate about the number of kids involved, I think we had like a hundred and twenty kids involved in Atlantic. Is it six through senior high? It's a lot of, a lot of grades involved and the big kids helped the little kids, so. A good way to participate. For people who and for students who maybe don't have a lot of athletic ability to go out for football or volleyball or some of the major sports, they could do archery. And so it's a good, it's a good worthwhile activity that the school supports.
I have two, Laura and I were able to go to the Brandon, Mr. Brandon Baggett's drama, Western at Deadwood, we were up at.
A luncheon.
A luncheon and they were all dressed up in their western gear and in character. The whole time, so it was fun to see them interact and in in their different characters. That was kind of fun to participate in and then I was able to go speak to the Rotary about the happiness advantage, Orange Frog. And had great feedback, I've even gotten several thank yous in the mail, just thanking. Thanking me for coming, excited about the program and what can they do to support, so. That was exciting to talk to them and even have one that would love to join us in the training. As one of our community members, so.
I guess I'll just shout out to, I'm a basketball guy, basketball and wrestling season, so there's. About every night of the week, there's somewhere where you can watch one of our kids play, whether it's here or on the road or whatever, but we're kind of off to a slow start, but. I think we'll be fine once we get going and get into the, certainly we'll get into the grind and get going, so I'm excited to. Watch our kids excel in wrestling and basketball, so.
Thank you, mark your calendars for the twenty ninth.
Will you, will you let us know some of the things, like what time we need to be there and some information?
I'm sure they'll take you whenever you would be there.
Okay, okay, all right, but you'll, I'll let you're in charge of letting us know.
Okay, let's move on to financial reports.
Sarah, is there anything you want to highlight?
Um, no, I think the only thing that I was going to bring out on page seven, which is the general fund expenditure comparison report. So like I kind of told you last month, we had a lot of expenditures at the front end. So it's kind of looking like we're way over where we should be compared to years before. But if you look at October, so there was a hundred and three thousand nine hundred and five dollars in expenditures related to the fire. And six hundred and twenty seven thousand related to ESER, so that's a total of seven hundred thirty one thousand that we wouldn't normally have, because it's. Something different, so if you take all that out. Even though it says in November that we're eighteen point four two percent greater than last year, if you take that out, it's like four, around like four percent. Which is to be expected with our, you know, we gave three percent raises recently and so I don't have any concerns as of right now. It does look kind of concerning then when you see twenty five percent. You're like, there has to be a reason why it's so different, so.
And Sarah, I just appreciate that you flagged those things and, you know, you put little notes next to it, that is actually really helpful one for me when I'm looking at the report.
Does anybody have any other questions?
I move, we approve the financial reports.
Yes, Hunt?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
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 Okay, moving on to consent items, does anybody have anything they wanna pull out or questions?
I would only note that Jesse Buchanan, the assistant girls soccer coach, we already have one, and everybody that person has been spoke to, and that's something that everybody wants to do, so.
I'm going to prepare the consent agenda.
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Quinn?
Yes.
Claire?
Yep.
Philip?
Yes.
We want to thank Mr. Eichel for joining us for another semester. Especially a teacher at Schuler, and then I know Mrs. K is really excited about this new art teacher.
I'm sure we were all excited to see that, so good, good job, Heather. I know. Okay, moving up to discussion items, tonight we welcome Tom Wallen with FRK Art Test to talk about our athletic facilities.
Yeah, where would you like me to stand?
You can sit right there.
And joining him also is Mr. Bob Sweeney. Who has done, I wanna give a shout out to Mr. Sweeney, he's done a fantastic job being our liaison through all this, I know that if this has lasted way longer than what we expected it to, so thank you for your and Kathy's patience, I know she's been beside you quite a bit during this, so tell her thank you too.
If I tip over. Feel free to laugh.
It's to work on your core a little bit.
Might get one of these from the office. Well, thank you, board members, Superintendent Barber. I don't have a whole lot to report, Steve's been, again, your boots on the ground, there's been some some final items here that needed to be done. The track at the baseball has been raised, you just confirmed that with me now, they're working on the scoreboard at the high school. There's some fencing items, they did get the seating down out of the high school shop with discus, it's called dormant seating, winter seating. I think that that the district benefited from a spade of nice weather this fall. So the contractors were able to be out and finish up some of that work. It's been been a long haul, and it's been a struggle, and and certainly appreciate the district's, the school board's patience through all of this whole process. And I think that the tide is kind of a milestone. What we, what we have, I believe is in your board package, did we get it to you? So you have four documents to to address, and what these are called are certificates of substantial completion. So wanna underscore that word substantial, what we're saying here is contractor has substantially completed the work for these four areas that are represented of in these documents. So the first one was for the first one was for the high school athletic field only because that was done, that the synthetic turf was complete, so that the PE students could use it at the beginning of the year. The other three are kind of, a couple of them are retro back to when these facilities were used by the district, baseball softball. We set a date for last spring at the, when the first game was played, games were played out there. And then the Trojan Bowl, we we set a date that was for a year ago, twenty twenty in September, when you had your first game there. And then the most recent one was for the remaining areas at the high school, so the shop with discus, the paving, the concessions, the tennis courts. So we have four different dates of substantial completion.
Sorry.
Did you already, did you already approve the one for the
Yeah, we've had, it was two months.
Yeah, that that was.
I didn't think that, I didn't put that one on here, I thought that one.
I think you have it for Jenny deciding. We have, we have a copy, but they don't have.
Oh, okay, gotcha, gotcha. So what's potential completion means is that's when the warranty will start on the project and all the items that have warranties, one year warranty for the contractor. Then there's lots of products that have varying warranties for them. A mechanical units might have a five year warranty. The synthetic turf has, I think, a three year warranty, I'm not sure, I don't have all those. That that's kind of the main thing for the contractor, it's a formal document. What's attached to it are what we call punch list items where Dave, Tim and I are mechanical electrical engineers, come and would just double check everything, make sure the contractor has completed those items. And then there's a list of outstanding items that they need to finish, and then we go back and check on that once they tell us that they're done. So we're still in that process of completing review of those punch list items. The key thing for the board, I think, to be aware of is the the school district is still holding on to five percent of the project construction cost per retainage. And Sarah, correct me if I'm wrong, but we're just under five hundred thousand dollars of retainage at this point. That will not be released to the contractor until the district is comfortable and confident that all items are complete to your satisfaction. And so again, we'll we'll monitor that, Dave and myself, Tim and our engineers, we'll we'll keep track of that, and at some point, the contractor will apply for retainage release, and then we'll just have to evaluate how much is released to them and what the timeframe is of that. So you still are holding almost five hundred thousand dollars over the head of the contractor to, this is kind of a an incentive for them to complete and have things finished to your satisfaction. The final, final process will happen now for several months because punch list items notorious to take a while to finish and retainage release and clearing out the project financially. But at the very end of the project, we will release, I would imagine it would just be one document for the entire project, and that would be a certificate of final completion. And then you, your contract is complete, you have severed ties completely with with graphite construction, and you don't have to worry about them anymore. There will be ongoing warranty items for the period that warranty things are in place. Those will typically be subcontractors, Van Mondo Electrical for any electrical issues, Camlin, which you're all very familiar with here in town, if there are any mechanical issues, those are the folks that Russell will will reach out to if there are issues that need to be addressed during that warranty period, but really, your your relationship with graphite as a general contractor is completed at that time. So I'm not sure when we'll be able to have that for you, but that will be another, that that might be when you really get to champagne, celebrate. But but at this point, thanks to a lot of hard work, Bob, Superintendent Barber, other staff people, a lot of you on on the board as well have been to a lot of construction meetings and observed things, so it's been a concerted effort on a lot of people's parts to get where we are at now. And facilities are able to be used, I don't know, have any of you been out and tried out that tennis court? Pretty nice bit there.
It's been too cold.
It's gonna get sixty later this week, so.
We're excited, we're excited that USTA came and they're excited at the product that we have. So yeah, we're we're excited about where we're at, obviously, we'd wanna be using it for the last six months, but here we are, and we need to move forward. Tom, talk a little bit about the retainage, you know, we have some punch list items, and and I've shared with the board some some other things that, you know, some, you know, some concrete issues maybe that we have that we're still holding graphite accountable for.
Yeah, so the the warranty period for some of those items were were kind of past what those warranty periods were, but we we consider some of those punch list items, so some of the cracking that you've seen at the Trojan Bowl, you know, you've been using that facility for over a year, but those those were identified while you were still in that warranty period, and so we'll still hold graphite responsible for those. There are other areas that you're, that you'd just be starting your warranty period based on on these dates that will have, you know, a number of months to to have that covered for warranty on those items. So there there's, the the punch lists are not short, you you, they're, you know, thirty pages, so. So there are a lot of things that that we will make sure that that are are double checked and are confirmed. And it won't just be Tim or Dave or myself or our mechanical engineers, it'll be Bob will be checking that stuff as well. You know, a lot, a lot of eyeballs will be looking on those things, if there are any things that we are going to allow, we'll make sure that there's buy in from from the decision makers here in the district. For example, you know, as you walk down the stairs from the from the parking lot of the middle school down to the baseball softball complex, you notice the inside face of that that concrete set of stairs. It's not the prettiest concrete you've ever seen in your life, they've gone through and they've tried to fix some of those little honeycomb holes and deal with some of that, but it's it's not award winning concrete, is it gonna ever fail? No. Is it, is it sturdy and strong? Yes, or the stairs are fine? Are we compliant with with ADA accessibility? Absolutely. But it's it's not the prettiest concrete you've ever seen, so those are the kinds of things that at some point we we would say in those sorts of things, and Bob's heard me say this a lot of times, the fix is worse than the issue, if we say those are completely unacceptable, we want you to rip them out and repour them. You know what kind of mission we get on that, and this disruption to what we have out there now, so. There are a few things like that 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 we will just have conversations with with Steve and with Bob and any who might be interested as well. But nothing that affects safety or or compliance with all codes.
So explain, so we have these action items that we have to make action on tonight, these lists, these punch lists. Right.
Yeah.
So I mean, what what are we saying, if we approve these tonight, we're saying that graphite is responsible to complete every item on that list.
Absolutely.
And so we're gonna approve that tonight, if approved, you will give that to them, and then I noticed that they're supposed to put in an expected date of completion. And then do you hold them to that, or I I mean?
We try, I think it's sixty days, they're supposed to finish everything, and actually, they've had these punch lists already, every time we do a punch list, depends how quick, and Pam in her office, she's great, we bring, we bring her punch lists on little tape recorders, she has these little foot metal stuff and go, and she listens to them and she types. So she gets them up pretty quick, and so the contractors have had them, and they've been chipping away at them. But but officially, in in the document that you have, we have to record all of those punch list items.
And so then, if I'm understanding correctly, when all of those punch list items are completed, we will release that five percent.
As punch list items get completed, so Bob, ten eight or ten years ago, maybe less than that, the state of Iowa, due to master builders of Iowa pressure, they have a really good lobbying arm. It used to be the case, you did not really release any of your retainage until every single punch list item is complete. Now what they said contractors allowed to do is apply for partial retainage release. So they can go through that and they could say, you know what? Camlin Mechanical, they are really completely done, their punch list items are fine, they really ought to be paid their retainage because just because a concrete guy isn't so good, or it's kind of unfair to Camlin that that we're holding that money back. So they can apply for partial retainage release, so Camlin could be paid. And we can still hold the rest of the items. And what the Iowa state law says then is, is we have to assign a value for anything that we continue to keep on the punch list, and then we we can double that number, because what happens if you know, a doorknob fails, and then that doorknob that I just never comes back to finish that, and the district is in a position, you've gotta find somebody else to fix that item. It's gonna cost you more to fix that item, so that's why the value of that work is doubled, just in case the district has to has to make those repairs or see other people come. So once, once graphite gets these, I'm guessing we're gonna pretty soon see some applications for partial retained release, and we'll carefully review those. And those again will come to the same process, we'll send them to to Steve and to Sarah. You'll look at them, we'll have our recommendation, what you don't see is when the pay up comes in, there's some back and forth between the design team and the contractor challenging or questioning things. You won't see those pay ups, too, we feel comfortable that we are willing to make a recommendation to pay those. And and again, at any point, we're happy to answer any questions, happy to come to a school board meeting and explain things, whatever, whatever is is gonna be the most comfortable for the board. Particularly with this project, given the fact that it's been such a struggle with graphite. We just like to help explain whatever needs to be explained.
Any other thing for Tom?
Well, we've all known some of the issues. Looking back, has this been a struggle for you too, Tom?
Yes, yes, for Dave, for myself, for our team.
It's a little unusual, the amount of trouble.
Definitely. I've I mentioned this to Superintendent Barber, you, as a district, you're not alone in struggling with this particular contractor, there are other districts that are have have similar issues. And there are ways to help with that, to to kind of prevent that in the future, it it's a matter of of legislation. But yeah, this this has been been a big struggle. And why? Because we feel your pain, you know? You had to talk to your your athletes, your coaches, the community, and you had to tell them we're not gonna be able to play the first couple of games at the Trojan Bowl. That's, that is just, that's exceedingly difficult, so we just hate to see a district in that position. So that's, that's, that's the struggle for us, it really is hard. So, yeah, it's been, it's been tough, it's been tough.
I I think I speak for everybody in our district that when this is all said and done, or at final completion, we would be interested in knowing what we can do to advocate in the legislature to prevent something like this happening to another district. You know, if we can take our story and use it.
Yeah, that would be, that'd be fantastic, there there is some movement.
If you can help us do that when that is done, you know, guide us a little bit, that would be.
There's several architects, we we talk regularly. And and if if there is an avenue in talking with legislature legislators, and if Superintendent Barber, other superintendents, maybe a school board member are willing to make statements or 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 something along those lines where we can help the state of Iowa say, gosh, maybe we can put about five years ago, they said you have to take out anything in your specifications to talk about years of experience doing work. So prequalified contractors, we can't do that anymore, boy, it'd be sure nice to get that back in there again. It'd be nice to be able to blacklist a contractor. It'd be nice to have a construction management model here in the state of Iowa, it's called construction management at risk, where there's a lot of school districts that do construction management delivery for projects. But the the model that's at risk is not allowed in the state of Iowa, we believe that's a good model because the contractor has to assume risk. So there are some, there are some vehicles to help districts avoid this, and it sure would be would be nice, but we have in the state of Iowa, it's a race to the bottom for public bid work. There's no other way to put it, that's the case. There's no other way to put it than that's the case.
It's been a long struggle, but we do have a final project that looks nice. And I think the community and everyone appreciates it. And thanks to everyone involved, but especially Bob and Kathy. Your commitment is well appreciated.
Well, plus, or well-oiled if it had been done a year ago, right?
It wasn't.
It wasn't for your lack of trying out. And you too, Mr. Barber, you've been very instrumental too, so.
When I reflect and look back at it, the thing that I have to tell myself is our facilities are vastly improved. And it wasn't a one-time cut the ribbon and all three sites are done and ready to go. Uh, and no facility was opened ahead of time. You know, it was behind a little bit, but, uh, it just does this guy, old guy, good to drive by on a Sunday and see people out using the Trojan Bowl.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, dad with sons, you know, a family kicking their soccer ball around or whatever. Uh, and that's what it's for. And the high school hadn't got that huge yet because people weren't, they didn't get into a groove of going up there. You know, and we're still doing some track stuff and whatever. But, uh, the facilities will definitely be used a lot, so.
Well, and I'd like to thank, thank the community, you know, that, that voted for the bond that, that allowed us to do this.
It's, it's a great, uh, athletic facilities that are top-notch. And I think, uh, I think it's great. Took a while, but final project looks great.
Punch list, and I've sent you a list with eleven things on the top. Those are all small things that, uh, just need to get done. Punch list is the biggest, uh, the scoreboard at the track, we're pushing hard to get done by the middle of next week. So we can train on it, know how to run it. And it's ready to go and it's not April fifteenth and we're still trying to hook something up and figure out how to run it before track meet, so. And, uh, the other things that I've sent here are just Sweeney-isms. That'd be with what you want. Those are from the eyes and the walking and the observing, etc.
We appreciate that. Thank you.
I'll thank you for the opportunity because I don't think I'll have to come back to another board meeting. It, it's been an experience. You've heard me say this before. I've enjoyed it. I've had headaches over it. It's been stressful. It's been rewarding. It's been a combination of everything. I didn't back up to get my paycheck. I'm not bragging when I say this, but you had an eighty, eighty K figure, hire somebody to do it. And, uh, you saved about fifty-five thousand dollars by having a novice do it. But the novice knew the facilities. And the novice was bullheaded and had a strong backbone. And like Mike says, got a pretty good set of eyes. So it, I, I thank you for the opportunity. I, I feel happy for our district and our kids. And I'm removed from our kids, but I still believe in our kids and want them to have great facilities to play on and, and participate. And when I see enrollment is up, I say, maybe Kip Harris was right. Maybe we are gaining a few students just by our facilities. So, uh, thanks for the opportunity. I'll show up tomorrow and go herd dog a little bit more.
Thank you. Thank you, Tom, for coming.
Thanks, Tom. Yeah. Any other questions?
Okay. I did add the four. Thank you. Okay, moving on, let's talk about the preschool update.
This morning. Well, I know we talked a little bit about this, uh, either last month or the month before in regards to the preschool, uh, the fact that, uh, this fall, uh, seven kids were identified with an IEP, forcing us to have one of our four preschool sections to be a flip classroom. And, uh, based upon the ratio of social peers, which we call regular ed students and specialized. So as, we met with Pam, who's our AEA rep, uh, from childhood rep. And we just brainstormed and thought, thought through some different ideas. We recognized that there's a few things that we have to work on. One is early identification. But then we got thinking about, um, some behaviors in kindergarten that they struggle with. What is something that we could do, uh, that may alleviate that as well as better serve our three and four-year-olds? So, uh, that's where this came from. Um, I, I, you can probably read through it and, and Mrs. Morning can talk more specifically about all these pieces. But we're, we're proposing to, to hire an early childhood special ed instructor to serve two sections of three-year-olds. Um, these sections need to be classified as general ed classrooms, meaning that there needs to be two social peers to every one special ed student. Currently, we have ten three-year-old with IP's. So using these numbers, we would need to, uh, add another twenty social peers to, to meet that, uh, classification. Funding for this program would only come from those three, three-year-old students that have IP's. Currently, like I said, there's, uh, there's nineteen. Four of them are, this, this is, this is nineteen for all of our three and four-year-olds. Four of them are two-point-two-one, meaning that's their weighting. And then, uh, the rest of fifteen are three-point-seven-four. So they have more needs, uh, at that level. So why, why are we doing that? I explained the one, the flip classroom, currently that we're experiencing with our four-year-olds. We, we also believe that being able to serve all students with special needs beginning age three will help with early intervention, have better outcomes, reach school age. And if we get them when they turn three and they're, have special needs, they have the opportunity before they get to first grade to be, to have four years of quality instruction from Atlantic schools. And lastly, uh, looping would be part of this proposal, meaning that, uh, i- if this is something we're gonna go down, this person would stick with that same group of kids as three-year-olds and four-year-olds. Then one of our current preschool teachers would go down to three and four. And the other one would have just four-year-olds. So the majority of the, the majority of the students being taught by those, that, that teacher would be mainly, uh, your social peers. And you're gonna have a few, uh, four-year-olds identified with special ed. And then we would rotate then again the next year so that all three of those teachers would experience one of those roles. Go ahead, yep. No, I'm gonna let you, I'll, I'll let you take it over.
So, um, one of the things about adding an additional, uh, teacher and, and two additional sections, it, that's important to remember is when you think of a three-year-old versus a four-year-old, most people don't think there's a huge difference, but there, there really is. In a three-year-old versus a four-year-old, the things that they can do are definitely different. So being able to have three-year-olds with true three-year-old peer models would be really huge for those kids. Because right now, all of our three-year-olds only have four-year-old peer models, which sounds like it's a great thing. And it is a great thing, but to have actual age equivalent models would make a really big difference for them. The other thing, uh, that Mr. Barber and I discussed was that, um, adding this, we don't wanna be in competition with Head Start and Jack and Jill. They also provide quality three-year-old experiences, but not everybody sends their child to three-year-old preschool. This would give people an additional opportunity to send their kids to preschool with no additional cost for them. So, because some people just can't afford it. And most of our income-eligible people end up at Head Start, but they only take about ten kids. So there is a need in the community to have some qual- additional quality three-year-old preschool spots in town. So we don't look to try and, you know, take kids from any other programs. We just wanna offer additional opportunities for our kids.
We happen to know, like, what the numbers are like, what the surplus is for Head Start, or, you know, like, how long their waitlist is or something.
I don't know what their waitlist is currently.
But you do know that they're full and turning people away.
Plus, they have to qualify.
Under the income.
Yeah.
They have to have income qualification.
So I, I know that I've had parents that have contacted me and said, you can't get in and we don't have to real talk. So I, I, I know that that's a thing. Um, how, currently the four-year-old, would that be about thirty kids? Peers and, and models are, what we have currently?
We have thirty-nine social peer four-year-olds.
Yeah, we don't have a total here, just over sixty. So that would increase our numbers up there, but, uh, sorry. That's okay. So that's kind of what we're looking at, just additional opportunities. And also, when you get those additional twenty kids, like we found this year, we found seven kiddos that were four that needed some extra help. I'm imagining that if we add some three-year-old kiddos as models, probably a few of them are gonna become identified with having some special needs as well. Specifically, speech seems to be one of the biggest things that most of the kids that we're identifying, not only do they have academic or adaptive skills that, that they're needing some help with, but speech is just hugely problematic for most of our kids that we're identifying. So this would be another opportunity to, to push in some additional speech services too, for, not just for our first bed kids, but also for our genit.
Do we have space?
You have. That's another thing that, um, that we'll have to look at, but, um, yeah, I'll let him.
We would, we, we would have to serve them in the early learning center, so we would have to. And I spoke to our homeschool system program folks, it's like, you know, if we go down this road, we're gonna have to relocate. We relocate that, whether, um, we, we find something out at, uh, the achievement center or, I mean, the current situation, they have the ones pretty good too, so. But we, we made them aware that we were gonna talk about that this tonight and that, uh, that would be the most logical place to, to, to serve them.
It also gives our preschool teachers an opportunity to collaborate.
Right.
Makes sense. Talk to us about the benefits of looping. I had my, I had one of my kids looped and it was a great experience for her. So what, what are your benefits?
It is, the, the, the clear benefits are, you know, teachers build that, uh, they, all teachers build good relationships with kids. But when you get to take kids with you for two consecutive years, you know them, you know their families, you know what works for them, what doesn't work for them. And you also know what they know. So when you start your second year, you don't spend a ton of time going back and having to redo procedures and schedules and do a ton of backfilling because you don't know what they, they learned previously. Because you just go. So that, that can be a really powerful piece.
While you're here discussing preschool, can you give us a quick, like, a little refresher on four-year-old universal preschool? What our oversight is in the district or what your responsibilities are, what, how involved we are here to this point?
So we just, we just completed the desk audit. So every year, uh, the state requires us to do, uh, a four-year-old desk audit, which just is, uh, they pick, it's like ADA criteria or something crazy that we get evaluated on each year. And then they pick ten or twelve things that we have to then go in and report on. So we just did, and I say we, Pam Ollit is our AEA person that helps with all of the early childhood stuff. So she and I, um, spent multiple days together and went through all the checklists, did all the things. We've visited all the preschools, do quality checks in that way, um, and just try and be good partners. We all use the same curriculums, um, follow similar schedules, all those kinds of things. Because they do, every preschool falls under our umbrella, so.
And do we, um, how is that model with our district compared to others? Do most of the past community preschools and Head Start, or is it all under the district's umbrella?
We're very unusual. I believe anybody left has community partners. When the first, when the first four-year-old dollars came through, almost everyone had community partners. But since then, hardly anybody does. We're very much an exception and not.
What, what was that, community partners, you mean Head Start?
Jack and Jill, so Jack and Jill gets four-year-old dollars through, through the district. It kind of like flows through us to Jack and Jill. Um, Head Start, they're still a partner, but they've mostly focused on three-year-olds due to staffing issues. And we currently share several students with them. They've just, they're just a really, they've been a really nice partner with us. We did some sharing a couple of years ago, last year COVID, that kind of messed it up. So they've mostly stuck with three-year-olds, but we still share, um, they, they identify kids at a slightly higher rate than, than most places. So we share three or four kids with them every year to give kids a full day experience.
So how we pay for this?
Well, so right now, we have two teachers and, and six pairs. So each of our teachers, they have to be special ed qualified. And so two-thirds, uh, since you got a two-to-one ratio, two-thirds, um, of their salaries and expenses are paid out of the, the general fund. And one-third is paid out of special ed. So we have, we've added in, increase in, in that. So, um, to pay for the teacher, you, you would take some of those special ed dollars that you get from the kids that are in special ed. Um, and then if you have two, two groups, uh, you would be moving those up to four-year-olds. So you, you'd benefit, uh, probably, probably some finances there as well, so. Yeah, so it's, it's, it's an additional expense. So I think we can afford to give, give them to our budget, yes. Do I think it's important that we do this? Yes, uh, we have work to do. As, as you can see, uh, we're, we're trying to figure out how we can identify kids earlier. Cass County doesn't have a very good record of that. We average between six and eight students where other counties average between fourteen and twenty, so.
At age three specifically?
Well, early, early access, they're what it's three. But if they're not identified before three, then they're not in the AA system and therefore, so we're trying to, we're trying.
Other counties do a better job of it, yeah.
The numbers would suggest that, yes.
And that's H, uh?
It's birth to three.
That's what?
Birth to three.
So that's, uh, because the, our, our, uh, welfare people, the home, uh, what is it called?
We, we have multiple, like, I, there are multiple parties that help with identifying kids from birth to three, from, uh, the hospital, the med center, DHS. Parents as teachers, first five. There's tons of organizations that are supposed to be helping to identify kids. And parents can refer their, their children too. Um, but for whatever reason, in Cass County, there's just been a big disconnect and we're just not getting kids identified. So then we're tripping into these kids when they get to preschool age, which is what is creating this need for additional services, so. I have a meeting tomorrow, uh, with the AEA. We, we'll continue to keep trying to, to get things figured out on the birth to three side, but it's not, it's not, it's our problem, but it's not something that we help identify kids in. So it's, it's hard because, uh, as a person who likes to take care of things, I wanna fix that problem, but it's not really my problem yet to fix. I, so we're working on it. It's just, it's hard to kind of outside of our space.
The other thing we're trying to do and, and, and Stacy and Pam are working through that a little bit is to, there's a, everything's paper copy, this, this wellness check. We're trying to get digital. So if, so we.
What?
Who's ever heard of that? Well, but, but then we have access to all, all the people, no matter where, if, where they're at. So I think that's another step that we can take to try to, to identify these kids.
Well, I think, you know, all of this kind of stuff from, I mean, the earlier you identify, the earlier they get help, which hopefully leads to less behavior problems down the road.
Absolutely.
And I know, and we're seeing behavior problems. I don't know, I think you guys are doing a great job, what you're doing, digging in. I, I love the idea of a teacher, I mean, I think it's something important that we need to do.
Right. I think it could be a really great thing for, yeah, our kids and our kids. Right. I think it could be a really great thing for, yeah, our kids and our kids.
I, I think it's a great effort on our part. I know it's a struggle this year. Some of the kids coming in kindergarten and we've got to catch them earlier. So, that's probably.
The other thing we're doing, uh, since the opportunity to hire J K is out there, whoever takes that position, we are gonna loop that as well. So if I am a three-year-old special ed student, um, in four years, I, I'm just dealing with two teachers. So we'll talk more about that when we get down to hiring some of those positions.
Thank you for our. Any other questions?
Moving on to the robust.
Well, Series 200, by doing some of those actions already, you've already reviewed some policies. What time are you gonna meet? Where are you gonna meet? When are you gonna meet? All of them. What kind of perceived rules of Robert's Rules of Order? So all those things are done. So I really want to just concentrate. There's just a few changes, but concentrate on 210-7R1. And then, um, 210-8. So if this is an orange color, that corresponds with Iowa School Board's second quarter update. So all of those orange ones are also on that second set. If you go to 20210-7R1, number 11, the order in which names will be called for roll call will be as follows. I'm just telling you, Sarah has failed. She has not followed.
I was reading that and I was like, oh, that's interesting.
So if Sarah fails, then I guess I fail too. So, um, we, we would recommend that, uh, we could change that to, uh, Sarah will randomly, they'll randomly select the order in which people roll, roll calls. Those, if that's, unless you want to follow the alphabet. It's basically that what it says, alphabetical, and then the second item, the second person alphabetical goes, and then the third person, and then so forth.
There was a reason. For this.
You want to keep that in there then? We can change it. We'll do it too.
I don't care. I think they're, they're. You want to know why it's, you know why it's.
No, tell me.
You do know why.
Well, I assume that we don't know.
Yeah, it's not, it's not a regular, it's not a routine call of votes, which is fine if we're not having anything controversial, but the minute you have something controversial and you wait to see, you know, every time that Nick Hunt's gonna vote first, we know how Nick Hunt voted, then you can kind of.
Well, and then if, even if you assume that, the way we do it, someone might say, oh, well, why is Sarah called Nick first? So that we all heard how Nick voted. And whereas this, if it's prescribed, you know, there's no, nobody blaming anybody.
I know it's a, but there, it has been.
Yeah, that's. I just went with the random because, so you don't always have to vote after the same person.
Yeah, which is good.
Can be another problem.
Honestly, I thought you were following this. It's not alphabetical in that order because, you know, fortunately, we've not had to deal with many three-two votes. But when you do, when you are in that situation, it gets a little
Right.
sticky, especially if you're the last person and you're the deciding vote, you know?
Yeah.
And then, I mean, if you know you're gonna be that way too, because it's always alphabetical or whatever.
Whatever you guys want to do. I like the way you do it, that it's random, I guess.
Keeps us on our toes.
Well, and then if it comes down to a controversial vote, I mean, if you're with it, paying attention, you're gonna know when your name's gonna be called. Uh, you know.
Following the different positions, yeah.
Right. So we need to decide.
I don't care. I just prefer that it's random.
I do too.
In some way. And I consider this random also, because I just know at one time we had somebody that was like, every time was the same order, if you don't want that.
If we keep it the way it says it here and not use the word random, though, we may get called out on that. I don't know, let's see.
Just make it Sarah's order?
I mean, to the point, you could, I can arrange the agenda so that that one comes up where Christie's the first one to vote. I could, I would never do that.
You have to know where Sarah left off the last time.
That's true.
Yeah, if Sarah just puts randomly puts them in order and you vote this order first, and then Laura votes and Nick votes.
You don't even have to identify that in your board policy. I mean, you could change that anytime. But that's not something that you must have added because of.
I don't know that that was added that way. I just know at one time we had the board certificate come out. We didn't follow that and it was brought up. Hey, you can't just like run down the roll call every time in the same order because it's not fair.
Right, yeah, I agree. So whatever you guys would do.
So you want us to write it randomly or just keep it this way? Put some language in?
I would say some sort of language that speaks of random.
That it's randomized, that it's not.
And then we just leave it open.
Yeah.
The next, 210-8, the last sentence, board members wishing to do, uh, to add something to the agenda. We should notice the superintendent and board president, X, about a day before scheduled meeting.
The, so that it goes to the pub, publications on Monday, correct? Our B, our meetings are on Wednesday, and do they hit Monday or Friday?
They go to the.
That's what I thought. So two days before it hits the public, which we can go in and amend the agenda.
Well, you gotta read the sentence before too. So any board member may play. So the responsibility is between you and I to help the agenda. Any board member may place an item on the next regular agenda with the consent of the majority of the board.
So if you didn't want it, for example, but Laura and Josh and I did.
Yeah.
You would have to put it off.
Yeah.
Even though maybe Stephen.
There may be, there may be a, a case out there where it's like, hey, this needs to be put on.
So we need to decide how many days prior to the meeting?
We meet. We usually meet on a Thursday before, week before. So.
And the agenda comes out on Friday usually.
We try to get you, it's usually not a completed agenda, but there's a lot that the board members gets on Friday afternoon and then the press, the public gets it on Monday. So we, you have to have it on the agenda by Monday at three, four o'clock, latest.
So say, so would that be?
I mean, you wrote, yeah.
Would it make more sense to say you gotta have it to you guys before you guys meet on Thursday?
Five days?
And that was the way I read it, the scheduled meeting. I was thinking the scheduled meeting between the board president and.
Yeah. You guys meet on Thursday, you gotta have it too by then.
By that Thursday, which would be.
So it would be one day. Or did you want to bet that Wednesday? Cause we meet on Thursday and that's the scheduled meeting.
Oh, by one day before our Thursday meeting.
That Wednesday before.
Yes.
Yeah, maybe you just say one week in advance of.
Yeah. Because if we need time to gather data, gather information or something.
That's true. And that way, you know, you two meet right now, because that's convenient. If you have another board president, it's not.
It might be a different day.
Right, yes.
So just make it one week before the board.
One week, one week per meeting.
Yeah, and so the consent agenda, um, that, that order's listed in there. That's more than, I mean, that's really your regular meeting order too. So it's not just a consent agenda, so Iowa School Board Association doesn't have it in there, so.
So what, what do they have? They don't have the entire 210.9, or they just don't have the highlighted part?
The highlighted part.
Oh, okay, got it.
We have some different items that have, have been added to our consent agenda. Now, I believe that are not. I guess I'm thinking about like donations.
And we do discussion items before action items.
I would suggest just including items that we have as part of our consent agenda list too.
Yeah. We'll update those. I don't think there's really anything else. Unless there's something that you spotted that you really want to look at?
Oh, there was, we, so we have to, first, so 206.3 and 206.4 for secretary and treasurer. We need to state who would be the backup in case Sarah was.
Yeah, that's right. Thanks.
What's the difference between the orange highlighting and the yellow highlighting?
Okay, we're gonna get.
Okay, great. Sorry, John.
I didn't explain very well.
So the 206.1, 206.2, it, it is, it's the, wait, no, uh, I'm looking underneath secretary and treas, treasurer. If our secretary and treasurer can't be here, we need to say who would.
It's the superintendent, it's the superintendent secretary.
Right. That's what we're gonna say.
Yeah.
Does anybody have any other comments, concerns, questions? On any of the other 200s? If not, we're gonna move on to the IASB Y22 second quarter updates.
So, or those 200s in this, in this packet are the orange related to the orange ones over here? So, um, Sarah and I spoke, um, this is the recommendation Iowa School Board. It really does, it's just more of a language thing. It is anything, not changing any intent to any of these things unless the law had changed. There is some numbers on 4014 related to employee complaints. And our recommendation is to have that similar to the students' complaints, but you say the matter cannot be resolved within X amount of days. Speaking immediately, supervisor employee may discuss with principal within so many days. If a matter cannot be resolved by the principal, the employee may discuss with superintendent in the days. Would this be a, it's just, this is not a grievance complaint. A grievance can, a grievance outlines those dates.
So this is a complaint against a fellow employee. First, their urge to discuss directly between the employees.
Yep.
If it cannot be resolved, the employee may discuss the matter with their immediate supervisor. So we have to pick the number of days. What, what's, what, what do you think an adequate day number, I mean, is a week adequate to get back?
Yeah, it does say that this policy has been updated to utilize the same process for handling employee employee complaints as it's used for student complaints. So like Mr. Barber said, we can probably just use the dates that we have in the student complaints.
You, and you can use that. We'll, we'll work out those student complaints ones that will, we'll add those numbers in there. And if that's such a long change. Otherwise, uh, there really isn't anything to intend of our policies, it's more language.
Okay, moving on to the OSHA emergency temporary standard employee vaccination.
No, that, um, I remember when this came, but the first, do we really? I didn't think we had the miniature horses, the assisted thing. Do you remember who was here? We talked about that. It is in there, yes.
Yeah, it's in there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, because I remember thinking like, who's gonna bring?
No.
And who's gonna deal with that? But we have to have it in there, right?
But how we define, how we define the assistant animal versus service animal. And in that policy, it's disruption is also a factor, so. There's a little bit of latitude there.
Okay, now moving on to the OSHA emergency temporary standard employee vaccination. Um, we are discussing this as informational only tonight.
So yeah, you know, these are the, if right now the federal, there's federal injunctions on the vaccine mandate. They, basically the vaccine mandate says, um, if that goes into law, that you have to prove that you're vaccinated. And if, if you are not, if you can't provide that proof, uh, you need to be tested weekly and you need to be wearing a mask. So if, there's plenty of injunctions and each day there's new rulings out, um, basically against that. But that is to, to be, if it, if it's, uh, the stay goes away and it goes into effect January 4th, these, these would be the policies required by the board to, to follow the federal law. So we're just giving this information to you. There's some waivers on there, um, possibility. But at this particular time, we're not asking staff for vaccination. If it gets to that particular point, uh, we will enact it and, and we'll be, we'll be forced to follow that law. If it, uh, if it becomes law.
So who drew, who, who drew this thing that our attorney or, or the?
These are Iowa school boards.
So the forms that are at the bottom of our, at the Atlantic header came from Iowa Association of School Board, or is that?
All, all of these came from.
Yeah, the forms are suggested by IASB, but I made a couple of changes. But the changes that I made were reviewed by our attorney. So, so, so we do, they would have to actually proclaim their vaccinations.
Yes.
And I just wanted to bring up that when we were at the school board conference, our, our legal team did advise us to talk, to have a discussion about these policies because at one point, if, if the status does change and we have to do this, we may have to have a special meeting. So that's why we're discussing it tonight. So we're prepared if that happens.
Okay, but I'm gonna be a little contrary. So what is the purpose of our discussion if we don't have, we have to comply, is that why?
If the federal government
Right.
tells us we have to comply and the Iowa governor I suppose doesn't fight it.
Because what has been communicated out to the staff is that there's a plenty of injunctions and, um, if those injunctions, uh, go away and it's enacted as law, we would be forced to follow, follow that mandate.
So it's not as much a discussion for us to change things. It's more an FYI.
Right. Discussion are we having, what, what do we?
It's more, it's more, I think that I was there when we were talking to the attorney and it's a, we should be ready. Because technically, you know, January 4th, this is all supposed to be in place, so.
Right. I think that's, I think, yeah, I wasn't trying to be.
Yeah, no.
And I had it in the superintendent report last month, so it's basically the same, but
Yeah.
This is part of our preparation. We have policies if we have to enact it.
Well, I, and I did have, when it hit Monday, I did have a couple of calls. Well, I, and I did have, when it hit Monday, I did have a couple calls, what, what, you know, what are you doing, and I explained. This is just an FYI, you know.
But I think it's important that people know that, even if they, oh, what are you talking about these policies for? The fact is, if it becomes federal law.
It's out of our control.
They're gonna have, we're gonna have to be compliant to those things. Proof of vaccinations, if you're unvaccinated, you need to be tested each week, we get to decide what. If, if we're gonna require our employees to pay for the tests, or we, we pay for it, and you have to wear masks, so. That, that's basically comes down to those three things.
Consequences of not doing that?
School district?
The school district thirty-six thousand dollars. Per incident. Are you serious about that?
It's not really a law, though. I thought laws have to be passed by Congress.
Those were the days.
I better go back to government plan.
Along with a few others.
All right, let's move on, upcoming dates.
Yeah, end of the quarters, December twenty-second, so it's the last day of, of school for students and staff. Teachers, pairs. No school from December twenty-third to January third, we do have a teacher on Thursday, January third.
And I'm gonna add January twenty-ninth. The board has the opportunity to work. Okay, let's move on to action items, the two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two depository institutions and limitations.
So this is just the annual, um, action item that we take to identify the maximum deposits. The maximum balances that we can have at each of the banks. And rolling those, actually, I increased that to twenty million, it was only fifteen million, but we've had so much cash going in there with Esser and the fire, and. I just wanted to raise it a little bit, just in case we needed to. And then, we still have First Whitney at five million, and then Iced it at a million, and we do not have anything in Iced it right now. And the only thing at First Whitney is whatever's left of our D O bond savings account.
So recommending to have a balance of twenty million, Go Hills Bank and Trust, up to five million, First Whitney, and a million for Ice Jet.
A right move that we approve of, those following depositories, and the maximum deposit amounts stated.
Second.
Williams?
Yes.
Yeah. Yes.
Yes, McClain, yes.
Okay, um, action item B, resolution issuing payments.
This provides, uh, our board secretary Sarah, the authority to pay payments, uh, between meetings if, if they come due. We try to use that as sparingly as possible, but we do need to have somebody have the authority to approve those if needed. So move. Yes.
Yeah, Williams, yes, McClain, yes.
All right, S B R C, modified allowable growth, L E P allowable costs.
Yeah, this is, this is the cost of our language learners. By approving this, and the motion that's listed down there. Board is, um, providing that ability to spend that amount of money, because it's federal law. The amount of seventy-one thousand four forty-eight ninety-seven. That just gives you authority, given our cash position, you cannot get cash for that anyways.
You have to approve the request of the school budget review committee for the modified supplemental amount, supplemental aid for twenty. Twenty-one for L E P excess cost of the amount seventy-one thousand four hundred forty-eight ninety-seven.
Second.
Thank you.
Yeah.
McClain, yes, Williams, yes, Philitt, yes, McClaren?
Yep.
Okay, transportation purchase for a bus.
We received two bid orders for seventy-seven passenger, last month, we talked about the reason why we wanted to get a seventy-seven passenger. Um, we would allow us to go to all Hawkeye Ten schools, for any activities, actually allows to go to Des Moines, probably even. As far as Cedar Rapids, or Humboldt, for example, it went up to Russell the other night. So, um, and that's the smallest bus with a ninety gallon propane fuel tank. We had, had a couple of additions too, that we'd like to have, we want those luggage storied between the wheels. And also the air conditioning. So, uh, Hopland, uh, for those two prices. Was a hundred and thirty-three eight hundred, and, um. School bus sales was a hundred and thirty-five thousand seven nineteen. Also, in your packet, you have a summary of our whole fleet. You can see that we're in pretty good shape, we did apply for the grant, we have not heard for that grant. For diesel replacement, uh, previous four or five buses we had, we had some grant money associated with that. Since this is part of our capital project, and I, we would be looking at purchasing this next fiscal year, July one delivery. But I think it's, it would serve a good purpose, uh, maybe a niche that we don't have, in, in regards to go taking it to. Um, some longer activity trips.
And this is propane too?
Yes. So I think, if, if your horsepower isn't as much as. Mr. Weiss looked at him, you know, those were the differences between those, but, uh. He, uh, doesn't have a preference one way or the other, he likes a couple of the features that school bus have, sales have versus. Hopland, and he likes the Hoplands, some, some features there too, so. I think it's a fair, uh, comparison, and we, we own Hopland buses, and we own school bus sales buses, so.
I move to approve the purchase of that bus, an amount of one thirty-three thousand eight hundred.
Second.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Williams?
Yes, McClaren?
Yep.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, certificate, certificate of substantial completion for the athletic improvement project. Do you wanna go through these one by one, or? Can we take them all at once? It would include the high school, the baseball softball, the Trojan Bowl, and what's the last one you just have?
Soccer field.
Yeah, the soccer. So up at the high school.
I guess I would move that we approve all certificates of substantial completion. Of the athletic facilities, including the high school, the baseball, the Trojan Bowl, soccer.
Yes.
Yeah.
Williams?
Yes, McClaren?
Yes.
Philitt, yes.
Okay, K application number twenty-five for the athletic facilities improvement project.
Seven thousand six forty-seven fifty.
Yep.
Hope that we, maybe, about, uh, seven thousand six hundred point seven fifty.
Yes, McClaren?
Yep.
Yes, Williams, yes.
Okay, um, the last thing we have is the change order for the A M S fire restoration.
So, if you look at the change order itself, there's four items on there. Hardwood flooring is replaced, uh, with carpeting in, in all areas, except for. Science room, up above and half of the media library. Original allowance hardwood subway floor was six forty-six oh fifty-one, the change order that would. Give us a credit of two hundred and twenty-eight thousand. I did talk to Stocker today, I did bring that up in my report, he liked, he thinks that putting maple, um, on that stage. Uh, it's the same price as the other wood that was there, help me out, Christie.
Like a seven gallon pine.
Yeah, 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 so, I would recommend that we put, replace it with maple, cost is the same anyway. Second one is credit for reinstalling cabinets, countertops in the administrative room, the new classroom. So that's a credit of two thousand ninety-two. Third one, since we have an R value of forty, forty-nine up there, we do not, uh, drop down ceilings, we did throw insulation on top of that. That was a savings of twenty-two thousand, hundred and six dollars and eight cents, and then adding a security door on that second entrance into the middle school. Would be an addition of nineteen thousand, one hundred and eighty-six dollars and twenty cents. So by approving this, these are the changes I would take to our original plan, and that, uh, we would have a credit, some dollars, and we. We want to look at refurbishing, uh, some of those things, but, uh, we're responsible for some of the roof, for example. I think it would be, if, uh, through, we haven't received any money for, um, damaged goods property. So we got that coming yet, we have some technology damage that we have, that, that we may have to replace or may not. And then we also have ex- extra expenses, but that'll kinda go to some of the things that we've spent money on already, so. Um, you know, we can talk about this at the next meeting or something, but. I think, uh, being able to furnish, furnish those rooms with some new furniture might be an opportunity for us. I think that would be, uh, you know, reconstruction and, and having a fresh look in the other classroom. And working with some of our teachers to come up with, uh, a good solution to that, I think that might be a possibility, if that's the direction we're on.
And so that's what we could use some of that refunded money for that?
I believe so, I haven't confirmed that, but that's what, all indications is Scott's, since our original conversation, that is how it's handled.
Would you, would you work with Josh then, and his staff to be, to decide what?
Yeah, we would, yeah, we would, we would involve, we would involve, uh, a group there, and talk through some of those things. Keep the board posted on that, like I said, if we do the, uh, what we're gonna do, the middle school. You know, we're gonna have to say, okay, what kind of lines do you want, what we need them for, um, and have some input from people there. If we do the high school, we have to do something similar to that, same is true if we, you know, we're looking at refurnishing, um, rooms. Engage them in those conversations. We don't know all the numbers yet, but we're getting closer. I move we approve the change order for the A M S fire restoration.
Williams?
Yes.
Yeah. Yes.
McClain? Yes, Philitt?
Yes.
Sabbath's hand was on the way out.
See, you got in there to quit there.
I know, I was gonna ask if you'd share.